Consider a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We have our payroll and longevity reports.
I think the longevity was a special pay plan.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes.
And then I will consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
David, looks like you and I are going to switch back and forth.
Yep, that's fine.
And I'll move for approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Go ahead and move to the opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to items not on the agenda? I don't see any of them.
Goodbye.
Okay, come on up, Betty. And state your name and address, please.
It's Betty Otten, 46787270 Third Street, T., South Dakota. I'd like to speak to the elected official salaries. If all the discussion has surrounded market value for positions, adding any type of an increase for the state's attorney and/or the register of deeds would be against your own philosophy. I just want to remind you that the people that elected you are hurting economically still because of COVID-19. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Moving on to regular business. Do we have Mike on the phone or not?
I don't think so. Okay.
Commissioner Poppins, are you here? Can somebody have Jake come out and tell us what's going on? You are still working on it? Well, just let me know when you get him. We have Erin Johnson. Is Erin here? Is she coming down?
I don't know if she's coming down, but I can address this for her.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, could I, I want, for the record, I'd like to make a comment from the commission's standpoint, if you may.
Yeah, you bet.
Two items. Yesterday, I met with Mark Cotter from Sioux Falls, from Sioux Falls, talking about the I-29, 85th Street interchange. And just for the record, I was going to say that it's moving ahead. The first, in the first quarter, the environmental study should be complete of this next year. And the second quarter, the design will be complete of this year. And if all is okayed, that means that at the latter part of '21, we would be, or they would be breaking ground for this new interchange and would be working on in '22. And if there were no hiccups in any of the process, it should be fairly well completed by 2023. And in the future, I will also, as you know, Lincoln County was the lead in making this happen by putting some money that the Department of Transportation had available for these kinds of projects at zero interest. And I'll be bringing to you, looking at our memorandum of understanding which we passed with the DOT. And the auditor and I met with the director, Darren Berquist. And we'll be bringing to you the details of that. And it may need an addendum to where we had originally signed in our borrowing the money and returning it. So that's one thing. The other thing is, I'm going to bring this up today, and I wish we had a full commission, because I've given a lot of thought to this today. You know, we have contentious issues which certainly have divided us on, you know, making, I think, the best decisions for not only the individuals, in this case, when we talk about elected officials, and also being responsible to taxpayers. And while we have public comment for individuals from the public to come forward and express their concerns on issues, which is a way in which we can hear from them what they're thinking. The other part that has always bothered me is we commissioners don't take the time to do the discussion on issues that affect the public and affect our budgets and affect the taxpayer dollars. And I would like to see, in a commission meeting sometime before it hits the agenda, before it has to have a vote, that we talk about whatever issue it may be, so that everybody can articulate where they sit, where they feel, what their attitude is, some of the things that they bring to the table. And that's an open discussion. It's an idea that we don't have to agree. David and I have talked on several issues that we don't agree on. That doesn't make David a bad person or a good person. It doesn't make anybody, Commissioner Landine. But I would like to have a vetting in the public on issues, whether it deals with budgets, or roads, or salaries, or whatever, so that we are more responsible and more transparent to the public on what we're thinking. Because I do think we have to restore some of the confidence in here that we do take the time to think about this stuff, talk about these things, research these things, and then vote, and then come up with the best possible solution. So I'm done with my sermon at, Madam Chair. I know you were, couldn't wait to hear it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may also comment
Sure.
as a commissioner. I spoke to Jim last Tuesday, and he knows what I'm talking about. And it's reference item six on the B. And Jim and I agree on many things, and then some things we don't agree on. And we still, like he says, we still get along. I echo, thank you Betty Otten for getting up and speaking. I echo your, I support your platform on this. It's probably not the most favorite platform, but for the elected officials. But I tried with COVID lingering yet, and it will be for several months. I just, I just feel we need to hold the line as much as we can. Anyway, that's, I'll get off my soapbox. Jim, we've talked already this morning once, so that's where I'm at. So, and I guess I thought we had, I thought we had three people to agree last Tuesday afternoon. But now we might not have. So that's fine, you know, so let it be, so.
Thank you. Mr. Golden?
Thank you. Erin Johnson is the Chair of the Minnehaw County Joint Mental Health Board. And she is requesting that we authorize Helen DeFault, who's in your packet there, her resume, to work as a qualified mental health provider in this case. The statute changed from the legislators when it comes to providing evaluations. Now, we, it used to be you had to have one evaluation, and then you would have a hearing on whether or not the person could be released if they're being held on involuntary commitment. The statute now reads that we have to do the evaluations every single day the person is actually being held, because we have to have a hearing within five days. So where we used to have one evaluation, now we're doing five on some patients. So she just wants to have the alternative instead of having, I think we have two at the moment doing it. This would add a third person. So it doesn't really increase the cost. It just gives us the opportunity to make sure that we're not working the other two people we have to the point of burnout, and they can rotate this third person in. So that's what the request is for, is so that she can work under the same contract, under the same conditions. She'll just be worked into the mix. The costs for these are something that's completely out of our control because if a family member, law enforcement, or a physician decides to go ahead and put an involuntary mental health hold on someone, then it's the county's responsibility to exercise and run the process. And so we wind up paying for the chairman, the board, and the attorney that gets appointed to the individual. So they usually don't appoint the attorney until the very end of the case. And they usually only go down and meet with them if they're not going to be released and we're going to have a hearing and they're going to be held for a considerable period of time. So that's the process, and that's what the county is responsible for. So that's the request, is just to authorize somebody else to get in the rotation.
And when does, are those administrative rules or statutes that went into effect? Or do they go into effect in July?
I think they went into effect last July.
Last July, okay.
And they are by statute.
Okay.
This has no impact on our budget bill at all. I mean, for increased costs that we know about? Or are we held victims by other people that can determine the cost to us?
It's a little of both, because we contracted these people. We have a contract with the mental health board to pay them at a certain rate. The amount of work is totally out of everybody's control. It just depends, and COVID has made it worse. We've, Vera McKinnon at this point is full. And they are actually releasing people at a fairly good clip because the mental health side of COVID has been ramped up quite a bit. A lot of people being out of work, being in their home, having their kids home. We're seeing a lot of people out of Vera McKinnon at this point. And so our IVCs are, have been well ahead of what they were last year. So to answer your questions, we control some of the contract parts. We can't control who, how, many.
211, by the way, reports their numbers. Because we went statewide, you know, for the first time. And they're reporting just record numbers of calls on individuals. That, you know, COVID has many, many victims. I mean, some that have the disease and others are responding to the unintended consequences for family purposes and things. So I can understand where, if we have to do five, what caused the one to five? I mean, who, what precipitated that move?
When you say one to five, I'm not following.
Well, you said they had one evaluation, and then now you have to do five. I mean, what, why?
I think the, trying to explain what the legislature did, because they all had their different motives. I think the thought behind it was, you had the initial evaluation that the person needed to be held, and then it wound up in a hearing. Having the evaluations five days in a row, there's a potential that the person is deemed stable enough to be released. Either they're back on their meds, they're not a threat to themselves or to society. And so that they could be released during those five days. We haven't really seen this made much of a difference. Usually when somebody meets their criteria, you have the 24-hour hold. And if there is an evaluation that's made that they need to be held, that they're a danger to themselves or to others, then typically, within that five days is enough to get the situation rectified. It usually takes more time to get the medication into them. So we wind up going through the process and winding up at a hearing. But I think the idea behind it was, they would be evaluated all five days, and the day that they were doing better and could be released, they'd be released quicker. We haven't really seen that. I mean, it's one of those situations where most of the medications take two weeks to get in someone's system. And so I don't know that it's really made that big a difference as far as releasing people. The other thing is, I think Vera does a very good job of, they evaluate every day and treat people. And if they make the recommendation for release, well, we do that anyways. But we have the requirement, we have to have somebody that we contract with and pay to go in and evaluate them every day.
Okay.
So, any other questions? All right. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve the as-needed hire of Helena DeFault.
So moved, Madam Chair. Second, Gillespie.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Sheri?
So we're here to give you an update on the COVID funds. And I'm going to let Franny speak on it, because she is the one that handles most of it.
Hi, Franny.
Hi. So we were allocated $4 million for the CARES Act COVID Relief Funds. So far, we have $1,845,331.56 for payroll. We have actually received $1,111,000 back. We have 400, about 420,000 pending. And then we're estimating about 315,000 for the rest of the year. For claims, we have received $67,259,000 back for claims, with pending claims of $33,108. And then we receive money back for our awarding fees from Minnehaw County. We have currently received $468,134.93 back for that. And we're estimating about $328,000 that we will get for the rest of the year. We also receive funds back for our juvenile detention from Minnehaw County. We have $208,000 pending on that, and then an estimated $60,000 still to come. With all that, we have a remaining balance of about $990,000. Any questions?
Yes, Franny. I'm going to just pull this down so I can speak more clearly. Excuse me. This, this will end on the 12/30, correct?
Yes, it will.
Yeah, there's no extension that you're aware of?
No, as of now, it's through 12/31. They said that they'll give us a couple of months to get those claims and get our money in there. So probably January, we need to have all of it submitted.
Okay.
So we can get it back. But it is through December 31st.
So you would have to submit it, though, before, on that date to get, you can't wait till January to submit it?
We'll be able to submit some of it in January, probably like the last payroll, the last claims and stuff like that.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, well, it's been a big help
Yes, it has.
for the county. Yeah, so that's all I have.
Go ahead.
This comes, you know, unfortunately, it comes late in the game. But NACO has designed a program, and some states have utilized that they have taken their COVID money and utilize that to support their 211 network, because it's COVID-related, so many of the calls are from families that are in distress or financial situations because of the pandemic situation. And I have been in contact with the Office in Pierre to see whether or not you could not take some of those funds, because that impacts our budget. We support 211 with a considerable amount. Counties now that are brand-new to 211 pay about, I think it's 50 cents per citizen. And I think the state has also contributed for the next two years. But it would be a way in which, you know, the monies that would go, to me, would make sense to go to a worthwhile cause. And, but I don't know, like I said, it's very late in the game. I don't even know whether there's, anything can come of that. But I hope that if they would pass another COVID bill, that it would allow for counties to utilize their funds to support that kind of activity, anyway. Just for the record. Franny, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Franny.
You're welcome.
Teri, you ready?
Morning.
Morning.
Looking for approval in the chair to sign agreements with the DOT for the federal bridge grants that were awarded this year. As a reminder, there will be four agreements to sign, one for each structure. Structures are going to be as follows. and 42-012-210. These are four structures that were awarded this year that we had applied for grants. Again, these, these applications are 80/20 split roughly. I think it's 81 something, point something, but.
Teri, I may be the only one, but I have no idea where 20 dash such.
I will give, I will give you a brief synopsis.
Can you tell us where they are?
To refresh you where these are. So this first one, 42-050-287, that one is located on 469th or County Road 111. It's about a half mile north of State Highway 46.
Okay.
All right. 42-012-210 and 42-011-210, those are what we refer to as the Junkie Bridge. They're on 289th Street. This is a structure we closed about a year and a half ago. We had quite a bit of contention with the neighbors out there about closing that structure. So those, that, I guess, I think they're going to be replaced as one structure, even though they're listed as two currently. The last structure we have is going to be 42-007-040. That one is located on 272nd Street, west of T. It's going to be about, let me see here, from Old Highway 17, it's going to be about a mile and a half to the west of that.
Oh, okay.
So those are the four that we have.
If you're done, Jim, I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair, if I may make one. Just for clarification, are these all poured-in-place bridges, Teri? Are they going to be some cells?
Are you talking curly, or what?
Yeah, I mean, it says here, construction after 2022. That would be after that calendar year, then?
Yes, because this is, what the state did when they awarded these, because there was 60 or 80 of them, 70 of them awarded statewide. And they split it into different, I guess, segments of the state. There's a northeast quadrant, a southeast quadrant, and then West River. And I think we have 14, I think, that are in our region. I was part of the selection committee for the consultant that's going to be working on these. And you're right, construction, I think construction, the money has to be allocated or designated to projects by '24. So I think the earliest that we're going to see any construction on these are probably going to be '23-ish, I'm guessing.
Okay. And then as far as, most of these would be poured in place. They wouldn't be necessarily a concrete cell.
I think, I think with the replacement structures, I'm hoping we can look towards boxes.
Okay.
Yep, they'd be poured-in-place boxes rather than precast. I don't, I don't know that the state.
But the junkie would be, more or less, the junkie one would be probably poured-in-place, so that's so big.
Well, it's going to be a box culvert, but it'd be, yes, poured-in-place box, not a bridge.
Poured, poured-in-place box.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think they're going to be looking at putting, because I think the consultants are going to be working with different counties, because we're going to have, what they want to do is, they want to do the consulting on all 14 structures in our region. And one consultant is going to do all the engineering on it. And when they let the bids on these, I think they want to let group as many together to try to get a better price for group bidding, you know? So I'm hoping, at least what was told to us is that the, the local entity would have some say in what that structure would be. You know, so I would prefer a box, you know, because there's less maintenance on a box.
The ones where you pull the cells together, is that what we're thinking? Or are we, you know, like Newton Hills Road, is that?
Uh, no, that, those are precast.
Precast, okay.
The ones on Newton Hills are precast boxes.
So this would be a, yeah.
These are all poured-in-place.
Okay.
But it's a box culvert, yeah. There might be multiple cells, you know, on them.
Okay, yeah, I was just, because the junkies are in, and upcoming, Commissioner Gibbons' district and mine currently, and, you know, sometimes you reach out to these people. We just give them a time, you know? Is there any way that these would be rolled back further, possibly?
I wouldn't think so, since they're awarded.
Yeah.
Like I said, I know that, I think the agreements are to get the process rolling so they, so they can start doing some engineering on these. I think one of the consultant that was chosen, I think they're looking to start next year, start design engineering or early surveying, doing hydraulics on a lot of these.
Sure. Okay, well, it's just, just a few items for clarification on it.
My question is, Teri.
Yep.
This junkie thing, I remember going out there. That's a, that was a mess to begin with. I mean, that.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's two structures.
Are they allowed, did we allow four-wheelers to go through, didn't we?
Yes.
That's still going on?
Yep, yep.
Is this part, are these bridges that you're talking about, is this part of your five-year plan that we have to submit, you know, every, what, five years, I suppose?
Yeah, these here, okay, this, so this federal bridge grant that we awarded these, this is different than the big grants, which is a bridge improvement grant through the DOT. So these structures didn't necessarily have to be on the five-year plan, although I think all of them except one were. That wasn't a pre, that wasn't required for this grant that they be on the five-year plan. So I know next week, I'm going to bring before you two structures that we're going to be applying for grants through the big program. And then, and if you're applying for any kind of grants, those are required to be on your five-year plan.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, that five-year plan, that remains pretty critical, because if you ever wanted to utilize SB1 or for the highway situation, that's what your, that's what all your revenue, if a county would opt out for a, to utilize what the legislature gave the counties the ability to do, that's what you have to use your funds for. I mean, yeah, because you've already articulated and identified those areas that are in most critical need. So, anyway.
Teri, was the junkie one, that one was not a big grant?
I, I think, no, no, we did not, that's not a big grant.
Because of traffic count, is that?
Well, any, any of the structures that we have would qualify, would probably qualify for a big grant. But the problem with a structure like that is, you could probably get the PE grant, preliminary engineering grants for that. But trying to get a build grant, you wouldn't be able to compete with replacement, other replacement structures in the grant system, so to speak, right? Just because we, there's the traffic, the ADT on it is so low.
Right.
You know, and I think that's something, moving forward, when we start doing more grants, you know, I think it's going to be tough to compete with other grants, especially with other, other counties that are applying for stuff that, they're going to have a higher ADT, and you get more points.
Sure.
You know, for that, so.
That makes sense. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the execution of the agreements with the South Dakota DOT for these grant awards.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to move forward with this. Gillespie?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sean, will you go ahead and call the roll?
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
I think the next item up is, we need to, last week, we, and I probably should have done this, but we, we must have spaced it a little bit, I think it was last week. But that dirt we have that we surplus over by T., and we decided to do sealed bids on it. Since we're doing that, we need to do an appraisal on that. So we need to select an appraisal committee for that.
Where is that dirt exactly?
It is going to be, so 272 and 468, which is the west edge of T., it's a mile corner on the west side of T.
Oh, sure.
On the county road there.
Yeah.
It's about a half mile south.
Okay.
On the west side of the road.
Are you volunteering to be one of those members?
Sure.
I sure can.
I, Madam Chair, I would sit on that, and I have a question, too.
Go ahead.
Teri, just for the transparency of, for the public that are here, where, where did this dirt come from? I mean, I just want that out in the open. Is that from ditch cleaning, or what? Is that from ditch cleaning or what?
Yeah, earlier this fall, we had done some ditch cleaning about a mile or so west of this intersection.
Okay.
And we ended up cleaning, oh, I'm just roughly guessing, fifteen-hundred feet of ditch, sixteen, eighteen-hundred feet, I'm guessing. And, and the areas where we were cleaning, we couldn't really throw it on, back on the properties and fields like we typically would. So we needed to have a spot close to just, I don't know, stockpile, haul it away. And Commissioner Poppins had, had, had kindly offered up a piece of his property to pile it on until we could get rid of it, so.
Okay, okay, oh, and it's, the dirt quality, of course, we'll appraise it, of course, but is?
I don't know, I, I, I think it's dirt, it's going to be kind of mucky, I mean, it might be all right after a few years, but.
Okay.
I mean, I think any contractor, they'll be, they'll probably gobble it up because it's, it's fill.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so.
It's prime dirt.
Mm-hmm, dirt is dirt, yeah.
Yeah, but it's prime dirt. We want to get as much as we can out of it, you know?
I think we all do.
Or do you want me to say that it's really good black dirt?
Well, I, I didn't think it was going to go to Landscape Garden Center or anything like that, so.
Well, you never know, you know?
You know, last year, I think we had bought clay off of a hill from a farmer. I think we were paying two-fifty a yard, basic, really, you know? So I don't know, if, if this stuff is just fill, I don't, I mean, I don't know what people are going to pay for it. I mean, maybe it's worth four bucks, I, I have no idea, but, so. There's a lot of development up by T, so there might be interested parties.
So, Terry, you're going to be on that committee?
Yes, I will.
Either of you guys interested?
I can sit on it.
Okay.
How many do you need?
Three, three.
Three, I believe.
You need, I, I'll be happy to.
Perfect.
We'll also have to find a time, I don't know when works for you guys to go do that? Time soon, or?
I suppose you want to get it going, you know?
Well, I mean, we can get rid of it, like, well, maybe it's not a big deal, I don't know. Gets, continues to stay cooler here with, it might freeze up, I don't.
Yeah.
They can probably haul it out of there, yep.
It'll get down to twelve or fourteen at night, then, you know?
So I would ask for a motion to appoint our Highway Superintendent, Commissioner Schmidt, and Commissioner Gillespie to appraise the filled dirt.
So moved, Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We still don't have Commissioner Poppins, I'm assuming. Okay, Bill, can we get you done?
Hey, can you?
Oh.
Mike, are you there?
Mike, are you here?
I can barely hear you, but I can hear you, go ahead.
Thank you. Why don't, since Mike's on, and I know the salaries were a big issue, Julia, do you want to come up so we can take that out of order?
Um, do, do you mind if I do the new hire as well?
No, that's fine, just make sure you're speaking into your microphone, so Mike can hear you.
First is to hire Monte Miller as a full-time light equipment operator for the Highway Department at eighteen-thirty-three per hour, effective the thirtieth of November.
So moved, Madam Chairman, on the new hire for the Highway Department.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Mike, do you want to take that, or?
Mike, I will refrain from speaking too much because everything is delayed, so, but I'll give you a second on this one, then, Diane, thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Commissioner Poppins. Any discussion? If not, Sean, we go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Commissioner Poppins, yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Okay, and lastly, the twenty-twenty-one elected official salaries, we've had several different conversations, how would you like to move forward?
Is anyone ready to make a motion on the salaries for the elected officials?
I want to, I'm, I'm not, I'll refrain for now from the motion. But I have spent considerable amount of time talking to our auditor, talking to our treasurer, talking to our state's attorney, talking to our register of deeds. And we have an issue here that I think we have agreement on our auditor and our treasurer would be, they're being brought to market not in one year, but over two years, which seems to be agreeable to both our auditor and our treasurer. So we would spread their particular adjustments over a two-year period. The sheriff does not seem to be an issue at three percent. But what we find ourselves in is this dilemma over our state's attorney and register of deeds, which are over their market at this time. So having talked to the state's attorney on issues dealing with him, I did find that he did acquaint me with his workload at the present time with five, I think, murder trials and several other major issues that he is dealing with. So I talked to him about, okay, what would be your already over at two percent? Register deeds is over by five percent. Well, if you don't do anything at all, you will have a real adjustment next year, because they will really be below market, as was explained to be by our auditor. So I have looked at several different options, trying to figure out how we can get a vote that doesn't divide us all the time. So I talked with Commissioner Gillespie about doing a two percent with the state's attorney, as he had recommended, I think, a one percent at one time. And I, and I talked with our register of deeds. And while she is not objectionable, she did say to me, how can you be fair by offering one that's over and I'm over? How can you not vote on doing one or the other? So I would look at, and this may, I, this will be probably shot in the head, but I would look at a one percent raise or a one-point-five percent raise for each of those individuals to get this thing off the dime. And that would be my motion, Madam Chair. As I said, state's attorney at one and a half, register of deeds at one and a half, while I have some feelings on that, but I'm trying to compromise, our sheriff at three percent, and spread the adjustments for our auditor and our treasurer over the two-year period. That would be my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, a motion and a second.
I'll, I'll make some comments, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yep, everybody can have their turn.
Yeah. Um, Jim and I discussed this last Tuesday afternoon, and not to put him on the dime or anything, but I thought we were, I had put out a, a motion for a zero percent for, for our state's attorney, and that didn't pass. Then I did bring it up to one percent, and, and that didn't pass either. I didn't want to move anything on the register of deeds, she's at five-point-five, and just leave her at zero. I am, this morning, I, I'm going to stay firm with my zero with, with the state's attorney. He, all these people that I know have got about a six percent last year, and I just feel with the economic thing that's going on with COVID right now, I was thinking that they need to step forward and say, well, we'll, we'll take it this year outside of the sheriff and, and auditor and treasurer, of course, that, I don't have a problem with that. But I just feel they need to take it and be, be at zero, both of them, so. That's, I know there's a motion and a second, so that's my comments this morning. Thank you.
Commissioner Poppins, did you have some comment?
I have too many to go over the telephone, unfortunately. You know, I know it is a difficult time, and I know that we're all concerned about the economy, but I can tell you as a business owner, in trying to hire somebody right now, I would like to hire three people. I have gotten literally three people apply for positions, which the starting salary is twenty-five dollars an hour. And they still shrug their shoulders at it as not enough money. And, and these are not the, what, these are very skilled positions that I'm looking for, but the unemployment rate is still very, very low in our state. The economic situation, I think, is still something we have to be aware of. I do want us to be cautious in any salary adjustments, but the thing that I get concerned about is we are using an analysis only as a tool, it's not, I don't know that it was ever used to be an exact science for what these elected officials are supposed to be taped. That being said, I think what Commissioner Schmidt has offered is a, is a good compromise, is giving them something, because their workload has done nothing but go up because of COVID. They're having to handle the situation in a much different way than to the public. They've made adjustments, they are still working, they're essential people, they did not take the option of sitting at home and, and trying to do this, they had to, they stepped up for us not to acknowledge that in some regard, I think, would be a little bit of a health fault. So that being said, I think Commissioner Schmidt's options is being respectful to the taxpayers, as well as being respectful to those individuals that truly have stepped up and are trying to do their job in very difficult times as well. I'll end with that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
All right, just for discussion purposes, you know, I, I may favor a lot of different things, but sometimes in order to move things along, you try to compromise the best you can. And I don't necessarily agree or disagree with my colleague, Commissioner Gillespie, on issues, but trying to bring us to some degree of, so we can work together and we vote on together. I'm sure that everybody that's in an elected position has made compromises, which they don't necessarily like themselves, but they've done it because they believe it's for the greater good. So that's in, that's why I proposed or made this motion to get this thing taken care of, so we can put this to bed and behind it. So, anyway, that's my, done with my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll make one more comment, Madam Chair, if I may. You know, I realize we're going to vote, we have a motion and a second, and I think everybody knows my platform on this. You know, to push this down another week, when we maybe have a full board here, maybe the outcome will be the same. So that would be another option, but that would be, I think, the eighth, and I don't know, we're getting into the eleventh hour here with the year and et cetera, so. That's all I have, I guess.
Would you want to do this, Commissioner? I mean, do you want to table this thing until you have a full? Will Commissioner Poppins be here next week?
I am not guaranteeing my return for next week, I would maybe have to call in as well, but I think that, that we have a motion, I don't know that it's going to change. Julia does need to have some preparedness, and so does the auditor, to move forward. I think everyone's very familiar with everyone's position on this, and again, it's a compromise that you're offering. I would like us to vote on it, but again, do as you will.
Yeah, I think we have a motion and a second on the table on the floor, so we can go ahead and vote on that. And if we get in a stalemate situation like we did last week, then maybe we'll end up having to table it, but right now I think we need to vote on the motion.
Okay.
Sean, you go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Gillespie?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Chad.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Motion carries. Next item, Mr. Golden.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think I am going to depart your meeting, thank you for allowing me to join.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
If I may, so you can hear me?
You may.
Thank you. The public defender's contract is something that I started working on in January of last, or of this year. It is up January of this year. We had a one-year contract. The old contract for the Public Defender's Office covered A, B, and C felonies, all the misdemeanors, all the felonies, A and Ns, abuse and neglect cases, the juvenile cases, also mental health, as well as the fugitive from justice, or, thank you. That has turned into being completely unworkable under the contract because of scheduling, because it used to be that our court dates used to be magistrate one week, felonies one week, A and Ns were a different time. They all overlap now. There's just no way for one group of individuals to show up on everything. So what we have discussed and we're bringing before the commission at this time is a new contract for the Public Defender's Office. They are willing to, or they've proposed to give up roughly fifty thousand dollars in the contract to go back to eight hundred thousand dollars. But they will only handle the felonies and the misdemeanors. And they will not be taking all of the murder cases, because here's where they're at. They've already got, I think, two to three of them in the office. The court system has already told them they can't take anymore, and they're going to appoint outside. So the days where somebody on the public defender's contract could handle all the murders in Lincoln County, I at one point had the contract. When I got here, there hadn't been a murder in Lincoln County in eleven years, back in two thousand. Now it's fairly routine. It's unfortunate, but that's just where we're at. And so.
Bill, can I ask you a question? When you say, for example, our public defender contract, I understand the separation, what we're talking about, but they have, they're taking so many murder cases to defend, okay? So the court system says you're maxed out. So now you have to go outside the public defender contract and hire additional defense attorneys for the defense purposes. Do we get to select them, or is that a court-appointed position that they have? Because I was always assumed that we don't have control then of the cost for the new defense.
I'll give you the technical answer and the practical answer. The technical answer is by statute that there's a list of attorneys that the county commission and the presiding judge agrees on. And that is what the list is for taking court appointments, and they're supposed to just go down the list. The practical application is, is that there are only a handful attorneys that are qualified to handle death penalty cases or murder cases. There's just not enough attorneys that go around that have that type of experience who can do a case where you just try it once, because you don't want people cutting their teeth on murder cases that are scrutinized, that are going to be appealed, they're going to come back and be on a hiatus, which is challenging the representation, and you may have to try it a second time if you don't do it right. So the list of attorneys who are available really are small. And so a lot of times what we have had in the past and we've had now, is we have the presiding judge going out to those attorneys with those experience, who may be in private practice, and asking them if they will come in and defend these cases, because there's just not a lot of them out there. Even, I was just told that our list of attorneys who will take appointments in Lincoln County has shrunk, and it's going down, because between Minnehaw County and Lincoln County, the number of cases in Minnehaw County have gone up, the number of court appointments in Minnehaw County has gone up. So those attorneys are getting scheduled in Minnehaw County. For them to have a competing caseload in Lincoln County, now their schedules are con- For them to have a competing caseload in Lincoln County, now their schedules are conflicting. And so a lot of those attorneys are having enough work up north that they're just not coming down here anymore. And so our pool has shrunk. So I think Lincoln County has been very fortunate in the fact that having the attorneys that we have under contract, for the most part, this is where they work. So we know that we have, um, Dave Stewart and Seth who are going to be working under the contract from Beersford's coming up. We also have Colin Fink that's in another firm that comes from Sioux Falls. And then we have two attorneys that work nothing but magistrate courts under the contract. And so while they're not all under the same roof, they're working under the same contract. It's just gotten to the point that we're really kind of scarce on qualified attorneys that we can get in Lincoln County just because of the demand has increased both in Minnehaw County and down here. So does that answer your question?
It does.
Thank you.
So is there a list that's maintained of attorneys that are, have indicated they're willing to take the A, B, and C felonies?
Yes, Judge Rasmussen has a list of attorneys. If somebody calls up and asks, they generally will be added to that list based on, you know, their experience. Then the court will assign cases accordingly. Um, we haven't actually brought a list to the county commissioners. I don't think they'd be opposed to sharing that with us. But it is a list that changes on a fairly regular basis because some attorneys will decide they are gonna stop doing criminal appointments for a variety of reasons. They may just do civil work, um, and they add others. So they have just, if somebody wants to do criminal work, they will try to fit them in and put them on that list.
In my experience, I guess, in, when I was in Turner County, was that the judge would reach out to different attorneys in those types of cases to see if the attorney had the ability to do it. So even if you're on the list, it's not an automatic, they're gonna be appointed. They're still gonna ask them if they're willing to be appointed on it and go from there on a case-by-case basis. So, and that was common over in Turner County. Those A, B, and C felonies were never included as part of the contract over there just because there were so many other things to do and competing, um, needs of the attorneys that were serving in those contract positions. So taking those out makes complete sense to me. And then you were wanting to break out, um, the mental health, the juvenile, and the A and N cases?
Yes.
And so were you gonna have just three separate RFPs? Or were you gonna break down? Because for the A and Ns, I know oftentimes you need at least three attorneys on each of those cases. And sometimes more than that depending on the circumstances. So how did you want to handle that?
That was part of the questions for the commission on how to handle this. I have suggestions. I have RFPs for attorneys to handle the abuse and neglect cases, um, the juveniles, and then the conflicts that we would have. So we'd have them under contract, just like the main contract, but it'd be for a smaller amount. And then they would be handling fewer cases. But A and Ns typically, they're supposed to be done within a year. It is not unusual in a situation where you have a lot of dysfunction in a family that they've had to take the children out of the family and get them services for them to go beyond a year. And then you get an attorney for the dad, you get an attorney for mom, you get an attorney for the kids. And then the state's attorney represents Department of Social Services. So that's why we get to those three. It is not uncommon to have more than one father in some of these cases, so then you get a fourth attorney. So they're very complicated. They're a very special area of law. In order to practice in it and like represent the kids, you have to actually sit through, uh, a little bit of training in order to represent children because they have special needs as far as they're considered to be incompetent and they can't really voice their own opinions in court. And so the attorney takes that role.
So how would that, if there were three RFPs for A and Ns, say, off the, off the bat, would one be for, say, the father or the mother? And then one, I mean, would they get split out by who they were gonna represent in those cases? Or would the judge make that decision on a case-by-case basis?
I would let the judges make those decisions would be my suggestion because, uh, they may have reasons on certain cases. They think one attorney would be better for one of those parties. Sometimes certain attorneys work really well with parents. Sometimes some attorneys are really good with kids. And there are certain cases you may decide that that attorney just, this isn't the case for them. And so they may make that assignment that way. Because I know you've done A and Ns, so you know exactly what I'm talking about with, you have some of the most difficult facts and situations that you're dealing with and you know it's, you get to know that family extremely well. And so sometimes it becomes very, um, emotionally difficult in those type of cases where you're making a decision, should a child go home or should they not, whether or not to separate that child permanently from their family. So those are really hard cases. I'd leave that to the court to assign the attorneys.
Okay. Well, and that, and that was, that was my question on that. Um, other than that, I don't really have any questions. You're, you're suggesting doing three RFPs for the A and Ns and then breaking out for mental health and juvenile? Or were you gonna just throw everything in one bag and...
My initial, and this is a discussion for the commission, uh, as I said, I've been looking at it for the last year. I have a lot of familiarity with the background. Was if you issued three contracts that cover all three of them, which would be the A and Ns, the juveniles, and conflict cases, then you get enough coverage that we probably have most of our cases in felony court that needs an additional attorney to be covered. And so they're under contract, it's one of those things that they'll pick up. We have them down here, they're already working here. So it's to their benefit to just take those cases and, and work them. And hopefully it won't cause too many conflicts because they won't have a great deal of numbers. The numbers I was thinking about, and this is open for discussion, which is having an additional either ten or twenty additional felony or misdemeanor cases on conflicts and taking all the A and Ns and all the juvenile cases. Our juvenile cases are roughly two hundred a year. Most of those don't have attorneys, but the cases they do have attorneys are typically going to be egg assaults, sexual assault cases, and unfortunately, they've been our murder cases. And we have a transfer hearing going right now with another shooting. So those cases typically, when they do get attorneys, are substantial and they go for a period of time and they take a lot of work. So like I said, we have about two hundred juveniles a year. The A and Ns go between eight to thirteen. But one A and N has adjudication to prove it happened. It has a, uh, separate hearing sometimes to see whether or not you have to reunify. And then you have a dispositional hearing. And each one of them are basically separate trials. So for an A and N, you can have the equivalent work of three trials. And you have to have a hearing, or you're supposed to have a hearing every sixty days. Now, because of court space and because of judges, that's becoming very difficult because we're sharing a judge with Minnehaw County and they come down here for us. So just because we have a handful of A and Ns, they are a tremendous amount of work. So my suggestion would be is either offering twenty, if you're gonna offer ten cases in addition to those other works, or thirty thousand on the contracts and do, um, have them pick up twenty of the conflicts. It roughly, it's hard to break down for the A and Ns because they're so lengthy. The juvenile cases are more equivalent to the felony cases. But felonies, I think, the main contract breaks out at about seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars per case. If you break it out that way, I think that's the way that Mr. Stewart had broke it out. I can't tell you how this one's gonna break out because I don't know how many conflict cases there's going to be. And I can't tell you how many appointments or A and Ns are gonna really come up because they come in batches. We don't usually see just one kid come in, we see ten groups. A and Ns are the same way for whatever reason. So my suggestion is, is, like I said, the main contract, they are offering fifty thousand back on the contract. They're offering the contract for three years and then going up, I think, one point three percent. So the first year would be eight hundred thousand, the next year's eight hundred and twelve. And then it's listed in there, but that would be the progression. They'd like to do it for three years so they have, they know what they're doing for the next three years because they're committed here to Lincoln County. I think it makes some sense with the county because that is roughly what the court appointment fees go up anyways. And so if it went out to straight appointments, we'd be paying far more. And I think we've gotten good service from them. So I would suggest that you adopt the PDO contract. And then for the RFPs, the question is, do you want to do one with one firm or one group of attorneys? Or would you like to do two or three and break out the cost so that we have multiple coverage? My suggestion is probably three contracts. Break it up, offer thirty thousand dollars per contract. You're going to pay upfront more, but what these contracts do do is they catch the conflicts. And right now, those are being paid, the judges are signing them one at a time. And then they're billing out their rate and the amount of time that they spend on it. I think that it would be hard-pressed to find most of them that are going to bill out less than a hundred and seventy or hu, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars per case. That's why contracting makes sense, is because the attorneys get an assurance that they're gonna get so much a month. We know that it's capped what your expenditures are. So this would capture up to sixty of the conflict cases. Doesn't do us anything for the murder cases. Those are just, I don't know how to deal with those.
Well, it doesn't do anything for costs of those attorneys either, does it? I mean, we can't control expert cost and all of that. So that's not part of the contract. It's just their hourly fee.
Just their hourly fee.
And then we pay everything else on top of that.
Yes.
So part of it's controlled, part of it is still a huge unknown.
Yes, and part of our cost goes back to the mental health issue as well because our evaluations and stuff that used to be done at Human Services, we're contracting for outside now because they're generally not available.
So Bill, what I hear is that, um, we would be returned fifty thousand dollars from our original contract for a public defender.
Yes.
We will offer three, we could offer three contracts at thirty thousand dollars apiece. So we would have the forty thousand that is left in deficit. Is that covered in anybody's budget? Or is that just coming out of our contingency or how do we finance that?
I believe that in the budget, there was an additional amount put in this year because we had so many murder trials.
Murder trials.
Because those are going to be appointed outside the contract anyways. That forty thousand dollars, I'm gonna be right upfront. From looking at the numbers, trying to figure it out, the court is already appointing people outside. These contracts hopefully would catch that money and bring it in under these contracts. So that forty thousand dollars, you've already budgeted for being just straight appointed outside of the main contract.
Okay.
And so the idea is maybe we can rein that in and get some of that. Because the two big ones that we didn't have control over were the A and Ns because we had multiple attorneys always getting appointed outside that because we had one person on the main contract who would take a parent. And then the children and the other parent would go to another appointment. So we're catching those and bringing them into the contracts. And so the idea would be is we're gonna wind up saving money in the long run. That's the idea.
Yeah. The money would be spent either way. It's either that we can control it by utilizing under our umbrella as opposed to giving it to the judge who would assign this thing outside.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the other thing is, is we have to find attorneys who are willing to work for this money in order to do that type of work. And they're gonna have to decide whether or not it's worth it to them.
Yeah.
So...
Do you see a problem with that, thirty thousand?
I, I...
I know what my answer would be to that, but...
I, I think we're, we're gonna look for some attorneys who maybe aren't as well-established. Because if they have a full practice, it may make no sense to them. If they're building a practice or adding on to it and they wanna work down here in Lincoln County, it, it covers their overhead.
Right.
So that's what we're hoping for.
Makes sense.
So I'd like to set the deadline so that we put this out for two weeks. Advertise it as much as we can, bar newsletter, uh, papers, have you adopt it. And then, um, set up for some interviews either late in December so the commission can see who the applicants are. Um, and hopefully have something in place before we get too far into next year.
Do you, and you wanna put it out for that set amount? Do you think it would be beneficial to put it out for RFPs and see who came in? How the, how the numbers came in?
We, we could certainly do that. I'm not real sure how people are going to bid or make their numbers.
Sure.
We have all that information. I'm more than happy to share it with anyone who, uh, wants to bid. We could certainly do it that way and see what they come in at.
Well, I'm fine with doing it with a set amount personally, um, to start with. And I guess if we don't get anything, we'll have our answer and we'll lower our numbers if not, um, good enough. So I'm, I'm fine with doing that. Thoughts, anybody?
Um, Madam Chair, um, just to, just to go through it again, uh, what would be, what's the total cost again, roughly? Uh, just to ballpark, uh...
My suggestion would be that if we did three contracts at thirty thousand dollars, it'd be ninety thousand.
Ninety grand, okay.
We got fifty back from the other contract. So there would be, as Commissioner Schmidt pointed out, forty thousand dollars...
Forty thousand.
Above what the contract currently is.
Okay.
With asking them to take sixty additional conflict cases. So the main contract would have a conflict, there'd be another felony, the court would appoint on one of these three. And then on A and Ns, we would also be short-circuiting court appointments on there because they would be adopting that. So hopefully, we would be covering the forty thousand dollars by avoiding having to appoint outside the contract. And we'd have the conflicts covered and all the A and Ns. This is something, a, a little bit different approach, so I can't tell you any past history, but that would be the idea behind it.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Bill. I, I, uh, I was hoping that Mr. Commissioner Schmidt would say, uh, we wish these kids would have been maybe in 4H and maybe they wouldn't be facing, uh, these issues, uh, with, with us. So anyway, that's, uh, I had to throw that out.
It's never too late, Dave.
Well, I'm just saying, uh, they always say if the kids are in, in, in 4H, they're less likely to be in jail or in custody or incarceration, whatever.
Supervised kids are good kids.
Yeah, so...
Mr., potential, Mr. Gibbon would probably could validate that, being a teacher and everything. 4H does help, David.
Yes.
You know, I, 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 I look at this and, you know, this is kinda one of those situations where we're trying to provide the best possible, uh, defense for kids, you know, on, on these situations. And unfortunately, you wanna try to get them while they're... The revenue that, as Bill has described, is going to be paid anyway. It's, I like the control that we have under this scenario as opposed to giving it to the judge. So, Madam Chair, I would move to approve, uh, the recommendation that, uh, Mr. Golden has outlined for submitting RFPs for three contracts.
And I will second that, Gillespie.
So it'll be submitting contracts, not an RFP?
Or RFPs for a contract?
I need two votes. I need one for the rigor main PDO contract.
Yep.
And then this one, I, I understand you're making the motion for the RFPs to go out.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we'll see what responses we get. I'll do that for two weeks.
Okay.
And then I will try to schedule, uh, interviews with the commission, um, as soon as we get responses.
So we're doing this kinda backwards. We're getting the contracts. We still have to vote for the approval for the fifty thousand, uh, reduction in the original contract?
You're gonna adopt another three-year contract with PDO's office that's limited to felonies, misdemeanors. It's for three years. It will increase by one point three percent. But it does go back from eight hundred and forty-nine thousand and some change, back to eight hundred thousand and then it'll go up from there. And it doesn't cover A and Bs.
We'll take the juvenile one first with the RFPs.
Okay, so which, your motion is on the juvenile and the abuse or neglect and the conflict cases to do three different contracts? Right?
Yep.
Okay. Sean, can you go ahead and call the roll on that, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we need a motion on the public defender contract to, are we amending it? It's going to run out in January, right?
It's going to run out, it'll be, this is a new separate contract.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to follow Bill Golden's recommendation on this, Gillespie.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Bill, our next hearing isn't scheduled till ten fifteen. Did you, were you requesting executive session today?
Yes, I was.
Under subsection two contractual matters?
Yes.
Can I get a motion on that, please?
I'm so moved, Madam Chair, Gillespie.
Second.
Thank you. Can you go ahead and call the rolls, Sean?
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. So that will be an executive session. So we are back in session and we don't have a hearing now until ten fifteen. So we'll go take a recess until ten fifteen. So we're in recess.
All the meeting back to order and we have open sealed bids for tax deed property at eight oh three East Fourth Street in Canton, parcel number two hundred forty-five zero seven zero zero nine. Sean, did we get any bids?
We have received three bids. And they are as follows. From Paul A. Iverson for three thousand two hundred dollars. From Perry Fossum, owner of Fossum Rentals, for three thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars. And we have a bid here without a check for eight thousand twenty-seven dollars from Mark Fredericks. So it would be up to you whether you want to accept this bid without an actual payment.
Was that required in the RFP?
It, it is required, but it also states that, I can read it for you.
Yeah, would you?
Yep. Says each bid must be sealed and submitted in or under cover of envelope. All bids must be identified with bid number and date of opening. Any bids submitted without identifying the number and date may be subject to be opened prior to the meeting and be rejected without further consideration. All bids must be accompanied with a check for the amount of the bid for the property. If offer is accepted, Lincoln County will issue quitclaim deed for said tax property.
Well, that's unfortunate, I don't.
Is there, oh, Madam Chair, if I, is there a number that he's left, a telephone number or anything?
Well, it's not part of the bid, so, I mean, just legally speaking, I don't think we can award the bid to that person even though I would like to.
It's almost, it's twice, you know, over twice, so.
So I think that we have to take the Fossum. And there sure there's no check in there.
Yep.
Okay. It is unfortunate.
No check, boy. I don't know him, Tiffany, so I don't know.
Well, I don't think we have any leeway, the bid said it must be accompanied by a check. So if we would award it to somebody else, that would just open us up for problems. So I would like a motion to accept the Fossum bid for thirty-nine seventy-one.
Okay, based on those circumstances that we've just talked about, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for thirty-nine seventy-one from Perry Fossum, unfortunately. Gillespie.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So Sean?
Yes.
Is there any, is there any contact information at all?
Yes.
There was, okay.
On the sealed bid forms, we asked them quite a slew of information so that we can get the tax deed property, or I'm sorry, the quitclaim deed created.
Sure, okay.
If Commissioner Fossum, can he now contact that person? He could, he could make a handsome profit.
Yeah, he probably could.
After sale of that property, you know?
We, I do notify all the bidders of what the bids came in with letters and who it was awarded to.
Yeah, I mean, essentially we are rejecting his because there was no check.
Unfortunately, if, you know, if he would have enclosed a check, we don't, we send it back to him if he didn't get the bid. So, you know, it's really no skin off of him to send a check with it. But anyway, I don't understand him, but anyway.
What did we appraise that at anyway?
I think it come in around.
I can tell you.
What did we appraise that at?
Fifteen, seventeen, fifteen.
Yeah, it wasn't very much.
No, well, it's not much in place.
Appraisal committee was Jim Schmidt, Joel Arons, and David Gillespie. And it was appraised land value of fifteen thousand, the improvements for two and a half thousand, for a total of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Almost four.
Thirty-nine hundred, thirty-nine.
Well, where are you, well, a fine transaction.
Thirty-nine seventy-one.
With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'm so moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.